All right, well, it's 7:01, actually, so I think we can get started. So let me read the introduction. As a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos.
Yes.
George Morris.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Woody Knight.
Yes.
And Mary Stone.
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Yes.
And in anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Marchionne.
Yes.
Paul, thank you. And Robert Rosine.
He is here. He's muted.
Okay, all right. So this is September 21, 2022, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board, and is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain divisions of the Open Meeting Law General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2023. This order suspends the requirements of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which I identify how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 8327143056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, U.S., New York, and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please, for Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel 9 on Zoom in that www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their and/or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. The meeting ground rules, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, as Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone *6 to toggle mute/unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Excuse me. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. If for any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand at a Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And then note that each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So then I think we can turn now to the submissions. And our first submission is Paul Marchionne. Marchionne, LP, submission of an A&R Plan for Reconfiguration of Lots 1, 3, and 3, our Main Street Assessors Map, R19 Lot 52B and 52B, respectively, owner, applicant, Nicola Di Stefano, and Rita Santoro Di Stefano. So Mr. Marchiano, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, you have the floor, sir.
If I can share my screen?
Please.
Okay, can everyone see that?
No.
No?
You should be set to do it, but let me...
How's that?
It's getting there. There you go.
Okay, so this is a property located at Main Street in Newbury, which is right on the Georgetown line. Actually, the Georgetown-Newbury line actually runs through the property. If you see the stone wall, the bottom of the plan, just above the stone wall, just the northeast, there's the town line between Newbury and Georgetown. So currently, there are three lots. Lot number one is an undersized lot, shown by these dotted lines right here, if you can follow my cursor. And then there's another lot, which is this bigger lot here, has frontage on Main Street. And then the back lot, which is a back lot with no frontage, is the remaining portion of the land. So what we have done is we had all the wetlands delineated and we had viewed it with Conservation Commission. They have issued an ORAD or Resource Area Delineation, so we know exactly where the wetlands are and are not. And now we're reconfiguring this into three lots. The new Lot 1, which is in the south corner of the parcel here, self, here, will be conforming and have sufficient frontage, more than the 125 required. It has the upland area required by the zoning. And there was soil testing done on it, you know, that it does show it has a perccable area for a house. The idea is that these existing structures right now, some of them which actually go over the lot line, will be raised, will be raised, and a new home will be built. So there'll be two other lots, this big lot here, it has 125 feet of frontage on Main Street. And then the remaining lot, which is a not-to-be-billable lot at this time, Lot number 3, is this big lot that kind of flows into Georgetown a little bit. The intention is that once this plan is signed by your board, you know, go to the Georgetown Planning Board, there's a signature block for them also on there prior to recording. So that's pretty much it. It's pretty simple. It's three lots now, maybe three lots later. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Let me turn to you. Do you have any questions?
No, it's just curious as to the curb cut that you have at the beginning of Lot 1.
Correct.
I'm just curious as to why there is a curb cut.
Well, the current driveway right now, that's so-called Pearson Street Private Way in Georgetown, is quite narrow. That will probably widen a little bit to provide better access to Mr. Pintone's property, because eventually that Lot 3 will probably combine with Mr. Pintone. And also it provides us better sight distance looking to the northwest, coming out of there, control vegetation, things of that nature, so.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, George, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Leslie?
No questions.
Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
No. Martha, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so. I think Mr. Marchando covered it pretty well. As he noted, the new Lot 1 is conforming in terms of area and frontage, and Lot 2 also, and has the required amount of contiguous upland.
Okay. Then if there are no further questions, and if the board is... Excuse me, I'm sorry. This does appear to me to qualify as an A&R proven not required plan. So if the board is so inclined, I would accept a motion to endorse the A&R planned entitled Plan of Land Number 133R, Main Street, Newbury, Mass., prepared by Marchionne and Associates, LP dated August 28, 2022, revised September 12, 2022, and September 13, 2022. Still moved? Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Was that Pete?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion, Pete?
No.
Any discussion on the motion, George?
No.
Any discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Any discussion on the motion, Woody?
No.
And Mary, anything you'd like to add?
No.
No. All right, then Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a public hearing.
Actually, we have the financial report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Martha.
Might be able to squeeze that in.
And I actually have it here somewhere, if you'll bear with me. Yeah, here we go. So the Planning Board Financial Report for August of 2022, payroll and invoices authorized payroll warrants for the Planning Director, PR 23-04 for pay period ending 8/13/2022, and PR 23-05 for pay period ending 8/27/2022. And then Planning Board expenses, the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for 8/30/2022. That concludes our financial report. Now I think we can turn to the public hearing. So this is Special Permit Application 140, our Main Street map, R41 Lot 42, requesting modification of the special permit granted to Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. on May 16, 2018, to allow construction of a utility access road, including a bridge in the location of an existing cart path. The applicant is New Leaf Energy Owner Karen Yousair, Thiel and Cavy and Yousair Successor Trustees of the Ruth Yousair Trust, 138 Main Street, Byfield, Mass., 01922. And Woody, as clerk, if I could ask you to read the public notice, please?
Yes. Town and Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, September 21, at 7:15 p.m., the Newbury Planning Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider a special permit modification application to modify the special permit granted on May 16, 2018, by the Newbury Planning Board to Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. for a 2.795 megawatt solar energy facility, generating facility on property located at 140R Main Street, formerly 136 Main, 138 Main, and 140 Main Street, and I-95. The applicant, New Leaf Energy, is requesting modification of the original special permit to allow construction of a utility access road, including a bridge in the location of an existing cart path on the property located at 140R Main Street, map R41 Lot 42, to provide maintenance access to the national grid interconnection on the electric utility transmission corridor. The proposed work is, as shown on the plans, entitled Notice of Intent and Special Permit Modification, 140R Main Street, Newbury, Mass., 01922, prepared by Waterstone Engineering for New Leaf Energy, dated August 16, 2022, and described in supporting documents. Applicant New Leaf Energy, 55 Technology Drive, Unit 101 Lowell, Mass., 01851, owners of record, Karen Yousair, Thiel, and Cavy and Yousair, successor trustees of the Ruth Yousair Trust, 138 Main Street, Byfield, Mass., 01922. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the planning office. 12 Kentway, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass. It may also be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website. A digital hard copy may be requested by emailing planningboard@townofnewbury.org. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard on this application should appear at the permanent place designated herein. Interested persons may participate in the hearing from their computer, tablet, or smartphone or by telephone by calling 1-929-2056099, U.S., and using the meeting ID number 83271413056. Or may watch the hearing live on local access cable channel 9 or at www.tncTV.org. The virtual meeting connection information will be included on the September 21, 2022 Planning Board meeting agenda, which will be posted no less than 48 hours prior to the meeting. And that's Larry Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. It was published in the Daily News, September 5 and September 12, 2022.
And thank you, Woody. Martha, has the applicant provided proof of a better notification and copies of the tweets from the Daily News?
Yes, he has.
Okay, so I believe the presenter is Rob. I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Is it Rosine?
Close enough.
I'm sorry?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay. If you could, please give us a brief presentation of the project.
Happy to.
Requested and why, please.
Great. Happy to. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Great. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Robert Rosine with Waterstone Engineering, and I'm here to present the special permit, the application for special permit modification for New Leaf Energy, formerly Borrego Solar Systems. This is an application that is being submitted for an existing 2.8 megawatt solar facility that was completed in 2021 at 136 North Main Street. The modification is for a special permit that was approved by the Town of Newbury Planning Board on May 16, 2018. The special permit alters none of the conditions of the special permit. I'm sorry, this request alters none of the conditions of the special permit, with the exception of the additional access road in the rear of the facility, as well as an increase in protected wetland areas and a net increase in wetland restoration. The project proposes to construct an access road along an existing farm road and remove an existing wetland crossing to replace the bridge, sorry, and to be replaced with a bridge to satisfy the final national grid requirements for maintenance access to the interconnection via the solar facility. This is a requirement by National Grid that access must be provided by the customer as opposed to by the utility. The road length is for 1,037 feet, and that will be widened and improved to a 12-foot road from what is approximately a nine-foot road, cart path now. There will be...
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Please, yes.
Would it be helpful maybe to everyone in the public if we could put the plan up?
Absolutely. We can do that. Do you have a preference, whether it's the plan or a Google Earth image? We could do either one. Why don't I start with the Google Earth image? And then I'm going to go back to the plan, just so we'll give you guys a sense of where we're looking at here. So here's Main Street. Here is... And we have roughly an 80-some acre parcel here. And this is the completed solar facility. It was completed in 2021. The point of interconnection, so there's an existing national grid transmission corridor that runs through here and then across the interstate. And the point of interconnection runs through the woods over this wetland and then connects at this location. There had been a misunderstanding of which, I'll say, I was not part of the original permitting. But there had been a misunderstanding that what would have happened initially was understood by the team that all access would have occurred through the transmission corridor rather than through the facility itself. Because this project has taken so long to permit, amongst other reasons, this is no longer the case. And we've done a real extensive efforts to try and exhaust all sorts of alternatives, but there really have been none available. So we're now going to use, we're proposing to go through an existing wetland, I'm sorry, an existing cart path that travels approximately in this area. And now is probably a good time to pull up the... Let me share my... Let me go back to this. Where'd it go? There we go. Hold on. How do I do this? Okay, I think I have to stop, share, and then share again. Just a moment. I have to switch, oh, you know, and back to... Actually, maybe if I just do this one. I don't know. Let's do this. It'll work for now. So again, here's the same facility we were just looking at. And we have... So we have our existing access road, the existing facility that's being constructed. And then we have a cart path that's an approximately a nine-foot wide cart path over with an existing wetland crossing. And it's an old wetland crossing that was used to bring cattle down to the railroad initially. So the proposal now is to remove this cart path, in particular, to remove the wetland crossing and replace it with a 150-foot span bridge. So we would actually be removing approximately 4,500 cubic feet of wetland fill and removing a wetland crossing that would no longer be approved in today's world. So another important aspect of this is that the modification is to the existing conservation restriction. So there is a conservation restriction that has CR amendment that has been drafted and approved now by the Essex County Green Belt Association and is now under review by the state. And we're expecting it to be signed any day now. We've been in communication with them regularly, and at this point, they have no concerns. Last part on that is that this involves a lot line revision, which is a fairly minor item here, but there is... Let's see, where is the lot line revision? Here it is. In this area, if you can see my cursor, this is the back of what had formerly been Ruth Yousair's property. As part of the Conservation Restriction Amendment, we added an additional 1.1 acres, I believe it was about that, 1.1 acres of additional wetlands was added to this larger conservation trust that is held now. So we have in total about 82 acres of trust, about 12 acres of solar facility, and the rest is all in conservation.
Okay, so your access is going to be off of Main Street, though. Is that correct?
The access is going to be off of Main Street. That's correct. Yeah.
So what is the old cart path, then? How does that fit into this?
So the cart path is, if we look at that here, so actually, I'll show you two parts of the cart path. So the cart path is just approximately 1,000 feet long. It travels through the woods. It doesn't look like a road, but it's been driven on for over 100 years. So it's an existing cleared area. It crosses a small wetland area here in the north and then travels around and then curves back around. And then there's this large wetland crossing here. This is a large wetland that is basically created by the existence of Interstate 95, which you can see here. Interstate 95 has two small culverts, two 36-inch culverts, to drain almost a one-square-mile watershed. So there's a fair amount of backup in this area. So the cart path is approximately two feet above the typical water surface elevation, which is fairly small, or fairly low, as you might imagine. This cart path goes underwater routinely. So the plan is to remove this section of cart path and then replace that with a bridge that would span 150 feet, so as there will be no permanent wetland impacts. The temporary wetland impacts are for the removal of 4,500 cubic feet of fill that was for the initial cart path.
So this is necessary for you to do access, your connectivity to end grid. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's exactly right. And the last part I'll add on to that is this is an allowable activity under 310 CMR 10539, which is essentially, it's in the Wetland Protection Act, allowing, providing the means for which utilities to access and maintain and construct their facilities. And while it will seem a little crazy to the board, as it does to the applicants, as does it to the Concom, that we would need to construct this large bridge to access this. This is the national grid standard of practice. And the real reason for this is that national grid does not maintain their transmission corridor, but every, you know, bunch of years, they'll go through and maintain it periodically. But the requirement for the customer, or in this case, the applicant, is that this road is accessible essentially all the time and such that if there were a power outage, that emergency vehicles can travel down this area in the same manner that they would access the solar facility.
Thank you. Where are you with the Conservation Commission on this?
We've met, I think we've met three times, and we have an upcoming meeting on October 4. We're pretty far along. I'm not anticipating needing any more submissions, although not entirely sure. But the last round of submissions... Although you're not entirely sure, uh, but the last, the last round of submissions was for. What, what I'd consider to be kind of fairly minor, uh, uh, changes to the plan set addition of notes about seating and. Um, spill response plans and some cross sections of the road, uh, but noth- nothing, nothing substantive with respect to, uh, design changes. We had it, we had to, uh, upgrade the, uh, or redo the, the wetland flagging. Um, and we had a re- uh, was redone and there were three, three flags that were changed that, that did not affect the, um, the overall. Uh, impact or restoration aspect of this. And, uh, then, and then a question was also asked about the hydraulics of the removal. Uh, the, the impact of the, uh, the, 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 the car path removal. If it would have any detrimental impact. So hydraulic study has been done, whi- which showed, uh, no impact, basically it's, it's, uh. This whole area is a pond because of Interstate ninety-five and anything above it really doesn't impact it. It's, it's an outlet control situation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else you want to add before I turn to the board members?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you Pete. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns?
I know, Rob, thank you for that concise, uh, presentation. I do want to just let the, let this board know, uh, the type of bridge it's going to be putting in there, just so they can have an appreciation of.
Oh, thank you.
Have to, uh, you have to provide.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's see, which one would that be in? That would be. It's, it's a trust bridge, so it's a, it's a fairly. Let's see, let me do this here. It's a fairly. Unobtrusive bridge. So the solid component of the bridge is really only about. Uh, maybe eighteen inches, which, which is where my cursor is here. And the rest of it is all essentially an open deck. So the bridge is, is, um. A- a- oh, and, and it's a, and it's a pervious decking. So what I mean by that is that the decking is left open. Such that when rain hits it, it will, it will rain, it'll, it'll rain and pass right through, uh, the decking. So the, it, the. Um, so we're not adding any impervious surface in, in, for any of this roadway or a bridge.
Great, thank you.
Th- thank you Pete.
Anything else Pete?
Nope, that's it for now, thank you.
Uh, George, uh, any questions?
Yes, is there going to be a peer review in all of this, that'd be before it's all said and done? I think Martha said something about that.
Yes, I believe so.
I, I believe, I believe it's been submitted to Joe Sawetka, but, uh, uh, he hasn't had a chance to get back to us yet.
Okay.
No, that, that's correct.
Okay, uh, anything else, George?
I have nothing now until I see the final, uh, peer review information and anything else of the electric company make him up with.
Uh, Leslie, do you have any, any questions?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, uh, Woody, same. And Mary, how about you? Do you have any questions?
I'm done.
So. Right now, uh, oh, Martha, are there any members of the public that, um. Have indicated a wish to speak?
Let's see, we've gotten no written comments from the public. Rob, if you might be able to stop screen sharing, I'll just see if anybody's got a raised hand. I'm not seeing anything. No. No, we have received, um, a letter from the fire department, but I actually had a couple of questions for them, so. I'd like to review that with the chief before I send it on to, to the applicant and to the board members.
Yeah, I, I, I believe there was some additional material submitted by the applicant today, which, uh, quite frankly, I haven't had a chance to review. Uh, I don't know if any of the other members have. So, uh. Let's see.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, if, if I could speak to that just briefly.
Uh, sure, go ahead.
The, the, um, the, the, the submittals, um, the resubmittals, i- in my opinion are, are fairly, fairly minor. Um, the plan set, it was, it was a fairly minor additions to the plan set, some additional cross sections and. And other items, um, on the hydraulic study, um, was, was not, um. Was not a surprise as to the result of that. Um, so the hydraulic study is a fairly minor piece. And the, and the wetland delineation really only changed three flags. So it, it was fairly minor, minor changes with that.
All right, thank you. Um, well, i- it looks like we're still waiting for some information, certainly for, uh, review engineer and. Pending the Concom, uh, when, when do you anticipate when you might wrap up with the Concom?
Um, I, I'm hoping that will, will happen on October fourth. Um, I'm hopeful. Um, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll see. Uh, yeah, we'll see.
Martha, anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, I don't think so. I think Rob's covered it.
Okay, uh, would a sidewalk be in order?
I think it would be helpful for everybody to see this.
Okay, do you have any, um? Yeah, I don't think that we can do much more today, you know, pending our, our, uh, peer review and, uh. You know, pending what, what the, the final decision of the Conservation Commission. Uh, so maybe, uh, the thing to do would be to, uh, talk about a date for sidewalk and talk, uh. About a, a date for further, um, uh, continuance of this hearing. Um, Martha, do you have any suggestions on dates?
I don't really, I think it, it depends on, on the board's availability. Uh, Joe Sawatka said that he would be available and interested in coming with us, but he, he will make himself available whenever we set it.
Okay.
If I, if I could suggest, uh, two things, uh, one of them is, uh, just for the sidewalk, uh, gi- give me approximately a week's time, um. That, that way I can make sure that the, uh, the area has been mowed. Uh, we, we did a sidewalk for the Conservation Commission and it was, it was wild and woolly. Um. And not a lot going on back there. So, uh, uh, my dogs love it, but not everybody loves it. So, um, a- and, and the, um, so, so if we can, if we can just, uh, have enough time to make arrangements for that. And then, uh, then secondly. Uh, as far as a follow-up, I, I think maybe if we could plan for, I, I think October fifth. Um, I, I believe this is the next, next, um. Planning board date. At that point, um, we'll know one of two things, either, either I'll have approval from, uh, the, uh, planning board, I'm sorry, from, from the. Conservation Commission on the, on the night prior, uh, or I'll know that we have, uh, um, uh, something significant. Or maybe not significant, maybe there's some follow-up items, but some, some items to, to report back on, um, one way or the other.
Okay, uh, how about, um? Martha, it does, uh, for the continued public hearing, the, does October fifth look reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Uh, all right, maybe could we think about the sidewalk, uh? Maybe October third or fourth, that would give you the week or so that you need and. It, does that work for everyone?
The third might work for me.
I'm sorry, it does or does not, Leslie?
It does not.
It does not. Okay. Um, how about the fourth for everyone? I'm not hearing no, so I guess, I guess it's okay. What's the, could we say, I don't know, uh, nine thirty, would that be reasonable?
That's the October third, the Monday, correct?
October fourth.
Uh, October fourth, uh, that's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Larry, two thoughts?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, everyone bring boots.
Okay.
Great point.
High boots.
High boots. Uh, the second, uh, Martha, do you think this could give Joe enough time to review things, the fifth, or would it make more sense? You know, in case there's a bump with co- with conservation, uh, or Rob. Uh, and you would go back to conservation on the eighteenth, would it make sense for the nineteenth? That way there's, there, there isn't pressure, uh, to make it happen. And I know, I know you want to. Try to facilitate this as, as quickly as possible, but I just don't know, uh, Joe's going to have enough time to review things.
Well, that's a good point, especially if he wants to, uh, attend the sidewalk and he'll probably need some time to digest that. Uh, so yeah, so maybe the nineteenth makes, makes more sense for the continuation of the public hearing.
And, and the reason I'm thinking that, Rob, is we would probably, we would follow after conservation, I would think. So if for any reason you got hung up with conservation, we would kind of wait that out. I would think.
Sure, sure. But, but it, the, you know, one. I- if, if we're successful on the fourth, we could, we could potentially get approved, um, conceivably. Um, with, with, with the planning board on the fifth. And, and, and the materials were submitted, um, you know, s- some time ago. So, I, 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 I would think, uh, myself doing. Uh, reviews for towns, uh, two, two weeks should be sufficient time for, uh, um, for, for Joe to get that done, I would hope. It, it's, uh, you know, we're really only talking about a thousand square feet of, a thousand linear feet of road and a bridge. It's not that complex of a project to review, in my opinion. You know, if we compare it with, say that, you know, the prior special permit approval, that was very, very, very complicated with a lot of issues. There's, there's no stormwater report to review. Um, there's no wildlife habitat evaluation. There's no, um, there's, there's no wetland impacts. It, uh, you know, there's no, um, yeah, it, it, so i- if, if, um, I'm, I'm, I'm pleading. If that would be, if that's okay, if we, if we could, uh, and, and perhaps if it doesn't look good, um, uh, maybe we can, uh, we can, uh. Uh, cancel for the fifth at the last minute.
Well, well, does, doesn't work like that. We, we have to hold the hearing and then.
Right.
Uh, it has to go forward, uh.
Right, I mean, there, you could request a continuance to the nineteenth, I think.
Martha, what do you think?
I mean, I, I, I know that, um, you know, Joe has.
Sorry to put it on you. I, I just, I just don't know if I can, you know, we can't speak to Joe's schedule, I guess is what I'm wrestling with here.
Right, I mean, he's, he's, he started his review, um. And. I, I think that he, he would like hard copies of the materials that you just submitted, Rob, um, if we can get those right away. I would expect that he could have his comments to us by the fifth. Um, I guess the only issue would be whether, you know, if there are comments that he makes that need to be responded to. Whether Rob would have an opportunity to respond to those. In time.
Uh, yeah, I, well, let's, let's take one, uh, one thing at a time. So, uh, I think we're good with the sidewalk on October fourth at nine thirty AM. Martha, do you need a motion on that?
Well, it's always good to have a motion, we can.
All right.
So.
All right, and we have a motion to hold the sidewalk on October fourth at nine thirty AM. Uh, i- is there a second?
Second.
Second, Leslie, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Was it reset to the nineteenth instead of the fourth?
No, we're just talking about the sidewalk now, George. We, we still have to, uh, talk about the, uh, public hearing.
Very well.
Anything else, any other questions?
No.
So Pete, how do you vote on the motion for the sidewalk?
Yes, please.
And George, the motion on the sidewalk?
Yes.
And, uh, Leslie, the motion on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, the motion on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, and Mary, you're in agreement as well?
I am.
And I vote yes as well. So we have our sidewalks that. I, I really, um. Rob, I appreciate, you know, your, um. Desire to move this along, but I, I, I think really the nineteenth is probably the more realistic date. Uh, I, you know, I, I can't speak to, uh, Joe wants to go on the white, on, on the sidewalk. On the fourth and to have, expect him to have a final report. That you would then have an opportunity to, to respond to by the fifth, I think is unrealistic. And, uh, so I, I would be inclined, um, uh, to, uh, continue the public hearing until the nineteenth. Uh, is there any, any discussion on that suggestion? Pete, anything you want to add?
No.
Uh, George?
No.
Uh, Leslie, any, any?
No.
Woody?
No, I think it's reasonable.
Uh, and Mary?
No.
Okay, then that being the case, I'd accept a motion to continue the public hearing until, uh, our, uh, October nineteenth. Uh, meeting at seven fifteen. I'm sorry, did I hear a motion?
Continue till the nineteenth? Yes, at, yes, motion to continue, uh, to October nineteenth, um, at seven fifteen PM.
Thank you, uh, Leslie, any second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Woody. Uh, any discussion, um, i- I'm not going to poll everyone, but is there any further discussion on the motion? Then on, on the motion itself, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote? Leslie, you're freezing up a little bit.
Yes.
Can you hear me? I think, I think.
Yes.
From Leslie. Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, anything to add?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes as well. So, uh, we'll, uh, we'll do our best, Rob, to move this along, but. Uh, I, I think this is probably the best use of everyone's time if we continue it to the nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay, Martha, anything, um? Anything else to add before we move on on the agenda?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you very much, Rob, here.
Okay.
Concise and very helpful presentation.
Great.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you folks, you have a great evening. Uh, we'll see you on the fifth.
Fourth.
Fourth, sorry, yes. That was just. That might have been a Freudian slip there.
Okay.
Good night.
All right, thanks again. Uh, okay, uh, so under new business, we have nothing. Under old business, we have nothing. Under liaison reports, select board?
Uh, really short select board meeting, about fifty-three seconds. It was just for renewal. It was for a one-day liquor license at Spencer, uh, Little Farm. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Leslie. Uh, for the ZBA, their, uh, regular meeting was last, uh, Wednesday night. And I was unable to attend. Uh, I know that there were three public hearings and, uh. Two of them, uh, were, uh. Um, two of them were approved and one was continued. And frankly, I can't locate my notes as to which one was continued. So more to come on that, I guess. Uh, anything from the Conservation Commission, Pete?
Uh, relevant to us, uh, the applicant we just heard, uh, uh, presented last night and was continued. Uh, two of the public hearings were continued, um, and no other big shaky news. Thanks.
Okay, good, thanks. And, uh, MVPC?
A few things on that. Um, the commissioners met, uh, had their first. Uh, meeting of this fiscal year last, um, last Thursday, and it was a, a lot of, uh. You know, sort of business and catch up and approving warrants for the last four months. Um, but the program managers did go through everything that they've got, uh, on the, on their docket right now. And I'm thinking if, if the board members are interested, I could actually just send that out to everybody, because I think it gives. A good idea of what MVPC is doing right now. Um, they are undertaking a couple of, of, um. Planning projects, uh, one is an update of our housing production plan, so that's going to be, uh, kicking off soon. And the other is going to be a, an update of our regional multi-hazard mitigation plan. So similar to the housing production plan, there will be a section for each of the fifteen MVPC member communities. So those will be getting underway shortly. Uh, the planners are meeting next Thursday and there's going to be a presentation on. Electric vehicle charger, charging stations.
Very good, thank you Martha, is that it?
Yeah.
Excuse me. And that brings us to the plan, planning directors' report.
Um, don't have a whole lot to report. I did attend the, um. Mass Housing Partnership, uh, webinar today. It's, uh, the whole series. It was a kickoff of a series related to the MBTA community zoning. Um, did any of the rest of you attend?
No.
Okay, um, so this one was kind of, um, sort of an overview, looking at it a little bit more holistically. Uh, one of the MHP members gave a presentation on making the case for. Complete neighborhoods, which is really, you know, walkable, livable neighborhoods. Uh, so it wasn't specific to MBTA zoning. Uh, the next one next week is going to be on wastewater systems. And I think I mentioned before, it's going to be the same person who did it at the, um. The Housing Institute this year, uh, Joe Pesnol, and it was excellent. So if you have an opportunity to. Uh, see it, I would recommend doing that. Uh, these sessions are being recorded and will be posted on the MHP website. So I will provide the links when I know that they're up there. There are eight sessions total. And I think that's about it for now.
All right, thank you, Martha.
Larry?
Yes.
You had sent out an email, I think it was something that Tracy had forwarded to us. Was it a leadership email or something?
It was board and board and commission responsibilities. Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. I think that would be a very helpful session for anybody who can attend that. It's on the 29th, I believe, at the end of the day, at 4 o'clock. And we can cover the registration fee for any board members who are able to attend. If you need me to resend that, I'll do that as well.
Actually, on that, maybe I misunderstood it. I thought that there were, there were options as, as to which subject, which seminar, whatever you want to call it. I thought that they were separate presentations for each of those different subjects that I missed, and that you could choose one or the other. Did I misunderstand that, or is everything being covered in one, one session?
The impression I had was that it's being, all being covered in one session.
Okay. Yeah, because they, I mean, there were a number of very helpful and useful subjects.
There were two different emails that came out, I think, a day apart. They were on different topics, right, Martha?
Well, there was also the one from MVPC about the CPTC.
Yeah, okay.
And that was to, to choose three.
I'm probably confusing the two.
Yeah.
I'm sure I am.
I will say I got three responses on that with different, different choices from everybody. So there was no overlap whatsoever. It was like nine different choices. So
In other words, it was no help at all.
They were all great choices, but nothing rose to the surface.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything else, Martha, before we move on to the meeting minutes?
Not that I can think of right now.
So that leaves us, we have the April 20th, 2022, meeting minutes, which were carried, which were carried over from the last meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yeah, are there any comments, requests for changes?
Not for me.
I'm seeing a lot of head shaking, no, so then I'd accept a motion to, to approve the minutes as presented.
To move.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second? I think I heard Woody say the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, and now, just, should we say the date of those meetings? I don't think we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, April 20th, 2022.
Okay, yes.
Yes, that was your intention, Pete, right, to move those minutes? And Mary, any, any comments?
No.
No, I'm actually going to abstain because I was not at that meeting. But the motion passes four in favor with one abstention. And I think that brings us to the end.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've been considering at least suggesting a policy change for the board, because I'm uncomfortable getting material for review one day before the meeting on something that may be significant, where people want to keep sending stuff in. And I think it might be good to have a policy that any material of that type ought to be considered at any given meeting, come in five minutes, minutes days, five business days in advance to allow everybody to have a meaningful review on their own.
I, I think that's a, that's a very good point, George, because people, you know, well, we saw an example of that, you know, today. I mean, with all due respect to the engineer who, who tells us you know, that, that there's really nothing new in the, in those 40 or 50 pages of material that was submitted. I'm not that quick a study, to tell you the truth. So Martha, maybe that's something we can talk about, and perhaps we need to consider some sort of formal, you know, policy statement or something that
Yeah, we could. We've got our, our rules and regs regarding submissions. And I, I did, by the way, I did, I did email Rob and say that the board had no opportunity to review this, and any further submissions need to come in at least a week before, the Wednesday before our meeting.
Even better.
So he's, you know, he's, he's aware of that. But we could add that language to, to our rules.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be, I mean, we talked about this at one point, and I don't recall what, what the rules act, how they actually read right now, but I think they're worth a review.
Right, I'll pull it up. I think we may have covered it already. I, I don't remember to be quite honest, but I'll check it. And if, if not, then we should, we should discuss that and vote on.
Yeah, if, if we have, if we have the, have it in place, then maybe it's just a matter of being a little firmer and, in, enforcing that.
Right, right.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Just, Larry, just FYI, George, that happened last night to CONCOM too, and it was just postponed because no one had time to do anything. So the applicant
It's not fair to the boards, you know, I'm a volunteer. You're all volunteers. I have other things that I have to do, and it becomes difficult to jump to the flag and the bugle to say, okay, let, let me do it today in 10 minutes. I can't do that.
No, no.
And it's, it's not reasonable for an applicant to expect that. I'm, I'm trying to enforce that. But if it comes in, then, you know, I will forward it on to you, but let them know that it's not something that you guys are going to be able to review or consider for that meeting.
Yeah, nor, nor does the public have an opportunity. I mean, I know you might get it up on the website, but it's not, it's also not fair to the public.
Right, right. Right.
So yeah, we have to probably be more sensitive to that going forward.
Well, frankly, Larry, I think it's kind of abusive of the board.
Yeah.
Well, they're not intentionally doing it, but when they do it, they expect us to act on it, and we can't.
Right, right, right.
Take advantage of the board. Anyway.
Well, like, it's just human nature. I guess you want to get it off your plate and onto someone else's.
George, how much of a point?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Good discussion. Anything else before we wrap up?
No.
Then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
And Mary, you're in agreement?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you all, and we'll adjourn at 7:59 p.m.